All right, looks like we're on the air. All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the April 25th meeting of the Town Council Finance Committee. We're going to be having a couple of different meetings tonight. The first one's going to be the Finance Committee meeting. First item on the agenda, opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the issues for the Finance Committee? Seeing no one, moving on. So tonight, the one item on our agenda is just wrapping up any Finance Committee discussions of the proposed budget. So with that introduced, does anyone have anything that they want to raise or discuss relating to the budget tonight?
Which budget?
The, either, either this, the school or the Finance Committee budget. And keep in mind then, we'll also be having a public hearing presumably on May 6th. So Penny?
I have just a couple of things relative to the pro forma and the municipal budget. My question is, and we have, what, $145,000 generator in our municipal budget, correct, for a municipal building?
For, for the Thomas Memorial Library and for Ponco.
So that 145 is, is money for a portion of the school one and, and then the Thomas Memorial Library.
And the full, yeah, and the full, the full amount for the TML. It's 100 for the, the school property and then roughly 45 at the TML, based on estimates that we've had for, for the TML generator.
Okay. I just needed to clarify that. The other thing is, um...
Can I jump in on that?
You may.
Through the chair. One of the things that we had talked about at the joint subcommittee level was, you know, where there are opportunities on projects like this to stop doing them as discrete individual projects and where there were opportunities to gain efficiencies and cost savings and, you know, just overall collaboration. This, this one stood out as one that, you know, was, was tailor-made for that. So there's a need for both and rather than do them separately.
Yep. Once I got clarification, I thought that that's where it was headed. The other thing is, is that, and I just want to say, because I don't think this will be a surprise to anybody, I am a pay and display proponent and I also am cautious about putting dollars in a budget that are projections that we have no trends on. And so I get kind of nervous about that when I see the 300,000 and I think that you were fairly conservative when you, you put that number in there. But if you could kind of maybe help people understand how we came up with that number because what could, what could happen if that isn't realized is some other shifting may have to occur. And so what is the contingency if those targets aren't hit?
If I may through the chair, yeah, thank you. I was specifically conservative, for one, thinking about if, A, if it does, council needs to take action first, so I don't want to get beyond my skis, so to speak. But due to council, due to council request to include an estimate for revenue, that's why that was placed in the pro forma, specifically as a separate line as well, so you could see that would plug in. Thinking about that, if the implementation takes place this summer, we may be looking at, you know, if it rolls in, starting with July 1. But I was thinking about this the other night, you know, as I'm going through all the different, I guess you could call the different scenarios that could take place within, within the situation. Like, oh, that's not going to be annualized. Yes, but it will because let's say it starts on July 1, we get July, August, September, October, oh wait, it's a fiscal year, May, June of '20. So it does become an annualized income at that point. So I think that's a safe estimate. It is conservative. I'm hoping that it's, it's very conservative, but, but it specifically was conservative. So that's why, looking at the estimates that were provided by the, by the RFP response and what analysis that was performed by the Fort Williams Park Committee, subcommittee that it was a part of, I think that that's a, that's a conservative but safe, safe assumption. Although I hate to use the word assumption, but safe forecast, I guess would be a better way to put it.
Are there contingencies if it isn't realized?
If it's not realized, I think there's a, there's an area that we could look at as far as non-assigned fund balance to close the, close the gap would be the area, or we could look at other areas where we could curtail spending as well to offset that in other areas. If we looked at that and said, okay, we did, we did not realize something that we had and if we had spending, we could curtail at the fort. I would probably look at that first and foremost because in many ways, the revenues from that would be used towards offsetting that. So we'd have to, we'd have to look at a combination of different areas we could cut at. Would be probably my first, first way to look at it.
Any other questions or points of discussion? Counselor Deveraux?
First, I, I don't know that we spoke about it too much last night, about the needs assessment. It is a large number. And I just wanted to point out for people that maybe aren't aware of it, Counselor Garvin and I were part of the Needs Assessment Committee for the school, with the school. Quite a few people were on that committee. And it was voted unanimously, all of us, including myself and Mr. Garvin, voted for the needs assessment. We saw it as imperative for our schools after attending the meetings, seeing the deferred maintenance in the schools, seeing a lot of the issues, some of them safety issues that weren't needed in the 70s and 80s that are really needed now, that we need to have in place to bring our schools up to date. This assessment's really, really important. And so even though it's a really large number, I'd like Cape residents to know that it was, we spent a lot of time looking at it from all the different angles and all of us really believe that it's very important and an important part of this budget. With that said, I, it is concerning to me that we're increasing taxes, we're looking at a 5% increase. We've increased them three years in a row now, about 5% for the school, school budget. And so my question to you, Matt, is, is that sustainable? Is there, and I believe that our school budget is very well thought out. It's, they spend a lot of time. We have an amazing school district, one of the top-rated schools in the state. I think that the funding is not extravagant at all. I'm, I'm very much for it. However, I also see that we have a lot of residents who may not have children in the schools, may not have any connection with the school any longer, and here we are raising taxes again for a school budget. Can you talk a little bit about that? Are there other, is there, is there another way? I realize that the state cut funding and that's part of the, the difficulty that we face. However, is it sustainable for us to increase taxes by 5% every year? Or are there other things that we can do?
It's a huge challenge. And one of the takeaways I had from Monday when I was up at, up in Augusta testifying in support of the Raise the Floor initiative was that we're not alone. Multiple districts across the state have been facing same challenges that we, that we're looking at here, being as, you know, a zero to or minimal receiving district. So that's one area that I think is an area you'd have to look at to find assistance from the state. One of the points that I raised was that 10 years ago, the town was receiving roughly $2.4 million in revenue from the state on ED 279 or general purpose aid education. Now we're roughly at 1.2 or in last year's budget. So looking at how that has changed over time has made a huge impact and created in many ways a revenue problem for the, for the school department. And so ultimately, I'd say the town has done just about everything it can to try to provide relief when it comes to seniors, specifically with, you know, the most recent circuit breaker program that was established here. So that helps. The state's circuit breaker program helps some, but it's a challenge because it's, it's not as great as what you may look at, or what you looked at over that, over the past decade in changes in revenue from the state level. So I would maintain my push on that side of it. As far as sustainable, that's ultimately comes down to what the council's decision is, where they want to see, and the decisions that the school needs to make and what the community will, will support, I guess is ultimately where the rubber hits the road. The good thing is that we, I think the town and the school work together to try to solve that problem collectively. But I'm afraid I don't have a, an answer to how we can generate more revenues, at least on the, from the school side. On the town side, I think, you know, the council's looking at a serious remedy by, or at least one serious tool by looking at the fort as a revenue generator to at least help the, the big picture. So I think that's, that's the opportunity that, that you may have to help, help on the revenue side of the equation to offset the impact of diminishing revenues from other sources such as revenue sharing and general purpose aid education. So that's probably the best answer I can, I can give you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Can I? Go ahead, Valerie. No, you go ahead.
I was going to switch gears, so you...
What?
I was going to switch gears a little bit.
Okay.
Counselor Jordan, then?
Um, just to respond to Valerie, I looked at the school budget for several days and last night's presentation kind of solidified it for me. I, I look at several things. I, I see the increase on the municipal side as a challenge as well. This is, it's, it's a bigger increase than I have seen in a few years. And I look at the school and I look at the town and I look at, like any entity, your salaries and benefits are a significant part of, of the budget. And so then you look at what do we work with from there? And I don't think we can allow our schools, buildings, et cetera, to continue to deteriorate. It'll just cost us more and more and more money. And if we don't address it, then we will be faced with building new buildings versus renovating buildings, which is a significant expense. I also see that what's facing the town is a transition to a more full-time fire and rescue, and that's going to be a significant investment, I would think, over the next five years. And that's something we need to look at very seriously. So when I look at the tax increase and I, I think about where are the places where we may be able to reduce a little bit, I'm going to look to hear from the citizens at the public hearing to see if they can help shed some light on how they might look at it. Because I see the due diligence that the school board members and superintendent did, and I see the due diligence that Matt and company have done, and I think I'm looking to the citizens to dive in a little more and give some advice on what they might consider because there's a lot of moving parts right here in this town. And these budgets are addressing those moving parts. So anyway.
Counselor Randall?
I can wait if anyone else wanted to chime in on that particular issue.
Counselor Garvin?
I just wanted to, so Counselor Deveraux, you were talking about a 5% increase. I want to make sure we're all using the same reference points and vocabulary and things like that because the total combined municipal and school budget tax rate increase, as we're looking at it right now, is 3.9%.
So 4% basically.
So, which, and, you know, there's, there's the different components that, that comprise that. But while expenses on both sides, both school and home, and municipal are up, I think greater than they were last year, because of the revenue projections, the, the overall impact to the, to taxpayers is lower. So, and I think if you look back on an annualized basis, it reflects actually a fairly average adjustment year over year. So I do agree with Counselor Jordan that, and this is something that, you know, we've been talking about for a long time, is that, you know, not only is there a need to make sure we're maximizing revenues wherever we can, but also make sure that for the expenses that we do have, we're, we're as efficient as we can be with those, but also be mindful in our planning of what's coming down the pike. So, you know, this year, it was the, you know, having deferred the school renovation study from last year, when the hit would have been greater last year. So, you know, that was a, a decision that was made in the interest of pushing that off. On the municipal side, as Counselor Jordan said, we're going to have other things that come steamrolling at us too. I mean, we're going to be doing a, you know, townwide revaluation in the next couple of years. We're going to be, you know, looking at adjustments to staffing on the fireside. There's other things in the capital plan that, you know, we're going to be as much of a victim of this as the schools have been for the last couple of years. So, you know, the, the reality is, is that, you know, it's a constant struggle to balance what are the services we deliver with what's the cost of providing those services? And, you know, from my perspective, the citizens have spoken pretty clearly about what their, what their priorities are, where those services stand. So, but I, my main point was just making sure that as we're talking about numbers, because there's, you know, what's the expense increase? That's one number. What's the, you know, net to taxes increase? And then ultimately, what is the tax increase? And so for this year, it's 3.9 as currently proposed.
Anyone else on this topic? So I'll just chime in very briefly. In addition to what's been said, I think what we're seeing is we're dealing with what are in effect national problems at our local level. And that's the, the dilemma, because there's no way for us to fix them. We just have, where we, for example, health insurance. A big driver here is the health insurance costs, which as everyone knows is a national problem. As our employee health costs are going up, the way the contracts are currently structured, we end up having greater than 5% increases in that category, which raises up the overall expenses. At the same time, the rate of inflation, or the, the consumer price index component for K to 12 education has been growing at double-digit numbers for the last decade or so. So our rate of cost inflation for education is actually lower than the national level, as near as I recall. So it's unfortunate, but it's a national problem that we're experiencing. We, as a society here in Maine, we, we have a couple of different ways to pay for this. We can use property taxes, sales tax, and income tax. And we, as a society, have chosen to primarily fund these schools through property taxes. And because of that, unless at Augusta, we decide to shift those around, it's ultimately going to be a property tax problem. And I think a key point that Counselor Garvin made is we're going to be doing a revaluation soon. What's happened over the last few years since our last revaluation is certain regions in the town have become very popular and the value of that property has risen significantly. The way that all of those moving components work is when, until there's a revaluation, because of the fact that our town is very popular to be in and our property values have risen, the state is cutting our aid. But if someone on one side of town's property goes from being worth half a million dollars to a million dollars, until you revalue, everyone else is in effect subsidizing their property taxes. So with the revaluation, we're going to see regions of the town where property taxes are going to go up significantly, far more than they've seen from these budget increases. And you're going to see other areas of the town where presumably they're going to actually see their property taxes decrease. And then we're going to have some level of equity and fairness as that revaluation happens. And when that happens, people will see that their overall tax rate is going to drop. But at the end of the day, we still have, the state has said that if we, it's in effect a wealth tax. The state has said that if you have a house, you bought it for 100,000, we now think it's worth half a million dollars, we're going to impose a wealth tax on you and we're going to use that to fund the schools. And it's unfortunate. Some, at the national level, people say, oh, we'd like a wealth tax. But then at the local level, with property evaluations and property taxes, it's not so much fun. But that's in effect what it is and that's what we're dealing with. And it's unfortunate because just because your property has gone from 100,000 to a half a million, doesn't mean you can afford to pay those costs. And it seems wildly unfair that you'll be pushed out of a home that you've had for 30 years or out of a community you've been embedded in for your entire life just because they've said, oh, your property's worth more. But unless we change the way we allocate costs at Augusta, it's the way everything's structured and we're, in effect, stuck with it. Unless we can rein in expenses, which we've been doing as the best we can, the revenue side of things, we're now looking around, we've brought in a, a new individual with a good amount of experience that will hopefully help us look at the, somewhere in this room, come up with creative ways to, to increase revenue. And then we're also looking obviously at Fort Williams, as the town manager noted. We're hoping those numbers are somewhat conservative with what we can generate. But between it all, it's unfortunate, I completely hear you, that it's not sustainable, but it's something that we're stuck with for the time being and we're doing all we can. So sorry for being so long-winded there. Counselor Garvin?
Thanks. And just to close, I had been looking while we were talking about, so last year, our, our approved tax increase was 6.6%. I mean, this is significantly less than that. So I think overall, looking longitudinally, I mean, I'm encouraged by the number this year because of where we are. So albeit mindful of a lot of the things that we have coming towards, you know, I had had a conversation with Matt following one of our meetings and, you know, there was a sense of like, oh, wow, this is great. I said, well, it's, it's great for this year, but there's a lot more, you know, coming down the pike that we have to be aware of. So.
Counselor Astro, if I may, if I may, just a couple of things that have changed over the period of the, excuse me, the whole budget season that have made an impact in a positive manner was, from the initial budget presentation to now, was consolidation of, you know, a joint purchase with the school department for a bus that they're looking to purchase this year, as well as some large capital items that we're looking to purchase. But we're now looking to do that through a lease purchase agreement. So what that ends up doing is having a positive impact this year as far as a, a large number expenditure, but also allowing the asset that's being used to being paid for at the time that's being used, so to speak. So that's kind of, that's been a bit of a change that we've put in over the past couple of years. And I think that's been a positive result to, to the taxpayers. Where we originally started out, we had a higher, obviously a higher mill rate increase as, as well as a higher percentage increase to the tax rate, but now at 3.9%. I think we're in, you know, the budget as it's being brought forward from both the town and the school side has, has resulted, you know, has resulted in a, in a, you know, that reduction, which has been a good thing. The other item that we have on there is, yeah, we're plugging in the income or anticipated income from, from the fort. And then I just want to let people know that the anticipated mill rate at 1976, the 74 cents change that you're looking at, the impact that that has is basically about $74 per every 100,000 or, let's say it's $148 for a $200,000 house and $222 for say a $300,000 house. And a median home in town is roughly about $350,000. So you're looking at probably about a $250 to $275 increase on the taxes. That's as high as it's going to be. And the reason why I'm saying it at this point in time is the legislature is still in session and there is still discussions as far as what the towns will be receiving for both education aid as well as, as well as revenue sharing. So with those numbers still in play, this is, this is still a conservative estimate, I think, as well as the final amount of municipal value that gets committed when the tax rate actually is set in the summer. So this is, what we're looking here is, is estimated as the highest rate that it will be. So it could be less, as it was last year as well. We came out of the box with a higher mill rate than it ultimately came down to due to growth that we picked up because there is a substantial amount of building that's taking place in town with renovations and new homes coming onboard as taxable. The estimate that we have for value in the equation right now is a conservative one provided by the assessor. And so that's why we kind of brought that from the chair. That's why the tax rate that we're looking at now is probably as high as it will be. It could be less ultimately when the tax bills do go out, you know, towards the end of summer, you know, August. So I hope that's helpful, at least to, to having an understanding as to, as to where we are and, you know, what that impact may be ultimately. But there are two moving parts still and they're, they're revenue sharing and education, education funding that may increase from the state and those are still very much in play there. I don't think they'll decrease. I've plugged in, both the superintendent and myself have plugged in conservative numbers based on the best estimate that they've given us to this point. So I hope that's helpful, helpful information.
Thank you.
Counselor Randall?
So I do have one comment on that discussion, which is that I think as we start to talk about the comprehensive plan and move into next year, we should really think about what kind of development people might want to see in the town center and how that might benefit us in terms of revenues. But the comment that I was actually going to make before was I just, this year in going through the budget, there were a couple of items that departments were requesting. Public Works was requesting mower and the police department was requesting a cruiser. I think in the future, it would be helpful if we could get information as the school board did from the departments outlining whether something's a want or a need because it was a little bit difficult to find out, is this something that you need right now or is it something that you would like to have? And then the other thing the school board did, which I thought would be helpful to us as well, is what would be the consequence of your department not getting this? So if it's going to meet, so for Public Works, for example, they'd also requested another employee. So I think just to sort of visualize, just for us to be able to play it out, it would be helpful to hear from Public Works. If you get the employee but not the mower, will it address some of the concerns that arose from having a mower that's smaller and older? Just moving forward into next year. And then, and also as we start talking about, I know there are some large ticket items that we're going to be talking about and thinking a few years into the future, even in those discussions, it would be really helpful to know what are the priorities? Oh, and one more thing, I did have a concern, someone came to me with a concern about the ladder truck that we already purchased. And, and this particular individual was concerned that we don't actually need a ladder truck. And, and this particular individual was concerned that we don't actually need a ladder truck in Cape Elizabeth. I don't know the details of what, what's required for a fire department, and when, when we have to have a ladder truck and when we don't. So I think that that kind of information could go to address those concerns that people have.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, a quick follow-up on the, on the ladder truck replacement, hopefully this will be helpful. The apparatus, when it ultimately arrives, is what they call a quint. And by quint, it means it has five functions, whereas the ladder truck that we have now has really a couple of functions. But the reason why we selected that apparatus versus, say, replacing it with a standard ladder truck that, you know, multiple departments have purchased is, A, we saved roughly $600,000 just in ticket price alone between, you know, one, one unit versus the other. The quint also has the functionality of an engine, or what a pumper truck may be. So you, the chief could tell you what the five functions are. I can tell you what a 5-2 player is in baseball, but I can't tell you all the functions of the ladder truck here. But it does have multiple functions that, ultimately, we have another engine that will not have to be replaced because we purchased this other item. So we save, will save funding on one end from not having to buy just the standard prototype ladder truck that costs about 600 grand more. We're also saving to having to replace one of our other larger apparatus because of the functionality that this device also has. So thinking about the taxpayer, in that case, we're, we're roughly a million to a million two to the good by replacing it with the, with the device that we did have, so. I guess that's my best answer I can put on that, and I hope the person that asked is listening.
I hope so, too. I, I told him, I promised I wouldn't mention his name, yes, for anonymity.
But if you want to bring it back, or if you want to have him give me, give me a call, too, I'd be happy to discuss it, as the chief would probably be even better. But the long-term result is, we're, we're saving a lot of money by, by doing that, and, you know, it's, yeah, it's a much better device and a lot less, lot less cost.
Any other comments, questions, items for discussion on the proposed budget? Going once, seeing none. So thank you all for all of your time and commitment on working on the budget, and thank you to the town manager and the school board for all the effort that they put in. I really enjoyed the presentation last night, I thought it answered a, a number of questions for me. So after this, we're now going to be moving on to, I think first is going to be the special, the special meeting of the town council, at which point presumably we're gonna be setting the bud, the budget public hearing. And then the next item relating to the finance committee after that will simply be the actual vote after the public hearing, where we will be adopting the, presumably adopting the municipal budget and the school budget and setting it to, school budget validation election tentatively scheduled for June 11th. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the finance committee? And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, we're adjourned.